Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It is three o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Mauricio?
Commissioner Joseph?
Present.
Commissioner Stivison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Here.
For the record, we're trying to get Commissioner Viscara on the phone.
Okay. Begin.
Okay. First item that we have is 2A, Miami Date Fire Department Annual Report. Chief.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the Council, to the City Manager, and of course, to the beautiful residents of Sunny Isles Beach. My name is Ray Daddala, Fire Chief of Miami Date Fire Rescue. I'm proud to be standing here before you to conduct and present the 2024 Service Delivery Report. So we'll jump right into it. So I've got a little video here that highlights Sunny Isles Beach, and it's not just the services for calls, but also some of the community outreach programs. And there is some volume for this presentation. Thank you, thank you. So, once again, it's a pleasure to be presenting the 2024 Service Delivery Report for Sunny Isles Beach. Just a little overview of Miami Date Fire Rescue. Sixth largest fire department in the country with 72 firehouses that span from county line to county line. Over 167 frontline units, fire trucks, rescue trucks, and as you saw on TV, you know, there's quite a bit of specialty resources from fireboats, technical rescue, hazmat, helicopters, and as such. Over 3,000 MDFR employees, from our firefighters to our professional staff, as you see here behind me, that helped put this program together and the service delivery report. You know, Miami Date Fire Rescue responded to over 280,000 calls, and of that, as you could see here, just over 4,000 of those calls originated in Sunny Isles Beach. And of course, Miami Date Fire Rescue is an ISO accredited one and a nationally accredited department across the country. A little fire rescue resources in Sunny Isles Beach, and this is just a snippet of a service delivery report that was presented, multiple pages of additional information that is dedicated for Sunny Isles Beach. As you can see, even though we have one fire station, Station 10, that's assigned to Sunny Isles Beach, as you could see in the TV program that numerous fire trucks from all around tend to respond for an emergency. On any given fire in a high-rise, you will receive in the upwards of 20 to 25, you know, fire apparatuses, including a command staff to mitigate these situations. So it's not just one fire station that you actually have here. It's 72 fire stations and 167, you know, operating units. And, you know, we have 42 firefighters on any given day that do tend to respond here, from, you know, multiple alarms to a reported structure fire, and of course, you know, medical calls that play out. The response time for fires and life-threatening emergency incidents here averages at seven minutes and 14 seconds or less. And as you can see in the map as to where the additional stations, but you have 11 stations that are within four miles of Sunny Isles Beach. So building a safe and resilient Sunny Isles Beach, the calls for service have increased over the course of, since 2019. And in addition to that, you know, there's certain communities around Sunny Isles Beach that's densely populated, no different in the high-rise communities in the northeast sector of Miami Dade County. There are two developments under construction that's going to bring in over 600 new residential units. And of course, Miami Date Fire Rescue conducted 592 business inspections in 2024. And, you know, last year, in the last five years, we've also upgraded some of the resources that tend to respond to the Sunny Isles Beach area. So it's not just about fire calls, rescue calls, and as such. As you could see, that Miami Date Fire Rescue participated in eight community events in Sunny Isles Beach, and we reached over 2,700 residents in the Sunny Isles Beach community. In addition to that, we conducted nine health emergency life protection programs. This is a first aid awareness class that consists of hands-on CPR, stroke awareness, stop the bleed, and as such. And, you know, we've received positive reviews, and we've also received testimonials where individuals have actually utilized, you know, the training that's been conducted here at Miami Date Fire Rescue. And you saw in the video, the, one of the classes that was actually being provided here at Sunny Isles Beach. So, of course, we're always, you know, striving to do better. We do receive surveys back from various residents that we provide services. And as you can see here, we did receive a total of eight surveys that came from Sunny Isles residents. And we received a perfect score of a 5.0 out of a 5.0 in regards to satisfaction rate. And as you can see here, that's actually one of the comments from a Sunny Isles Beach resident. So as you can see, the job continues to be done in a professional manner. And with that, Madam Mayor, that, you know, concludes the 2024 Service Delivery Report. And at this time, I open the floor for any questions.
Thank you very much. Who would like to start? Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner. How are you, sir?
If I can, thank you. So, and this is a question that I've asked previously. We've had, from time to time, actually last year, this year, presently, we have, we've been having outreach from Hatzalah, from another Jewish ambulance corps, to assist them in coming into Sunny Isles. What is your take on whether that service would be helpful to Miami Date Fire, or a hindrance, or you work together? How do you see it?
Well, the first question I would have to ask is, you know, is the service that's being provided by Miami Date Fire Rescue, you know, a concern? Is there any challenges? Are we looking for improvement? Second, we've worked with Hatzalah for almost 10 years. There are, there are statutes that are in place at the Florida level, laws. You know, I know that there's discussion where they do respond for residents, you know, but they have to contact a certain number. So the, the challenge at hand is this. 911, you call 911, fire rescue, you request fire rescue, fire rescue is going to respond. It doesn't matter from where, but you are going to get a unit. So, you know, utilizing a service that's strictly on a seven or 10-digit number with the anticipation of responding, you know, could be problematic. Now, we've been working together, like I said, for the last 10 years, and it actually flourished after Surfside, the Surfside incident. But I would have to have, you know, further discussions in regards to capabilities, responsibilities, because we do have policies in place with Hatzalah as to when we both arrive on an incident, what is to transpire. And I could tell you this, and just, just one snippet of it, is if both units arrive on the scene and the patient is unconscious, by default, fire rescue in the state of Florida is required to begin, you know, assessment and care. So again, it's...
Stand down.
I won't say stand down. It's never a stand-down moment. We will always work together, but, you know, in regards to transporting of the patient, getting him to the hospital of a person that is full cardiac arrest, unconscious, et cetera, by statute, Florida statute, my, any fire rescue agency is the lead agency to, to transport. So I think we would have to have further discussions as to what the vision is. But again, we have been working very well with Hatzalah. I know that there's another organization that's attempting to come in, but we haven't had any interactions with them. But that's where we stand with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you said you've been working with Hatzalah. Can you give us some examples of what you've done together with Hatzalah?
So they do, they do come to headquarters. We discuss different protocols. They are working on a CAD, so the Computer Aided Dispatch. So how 911 calls come in to fire rescue is, is the CAD. They're working on receiving a CAD similar to ours so we could, you know, coordinate calls. What tends to happen with these calls is a patient may call 911, but they may also call the 10-digit number...
At the same time?
Yes, sir.
Or afterward, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Either before or after, either way.
For the incident, yeah.
Correct. And what we've done is, we've actually shown up on scene either, you know, at the same time, or the Hatzalah unit may be there, and maybe, not necessarily a EMS unit, it may be like a, I think, like a motor unit, like a motorcycle or something of that sort. And they would begin care. Now, again, depending on the circumstances with the patient. If the patient is stable and a Hatzalah ambulance does respond, and they feel more comfortable to go with them, once we're assured that the patient is stable, we've actually allowed them to transport to the hospital. But we work hand in hand to ensure that, you know, the patient's not going to deteriorate while in transport to the hospital. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you said there's some protocols or standards in place with, with Hatzalah?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have procedures and protocols so that there's never a contradiction as to who's supposed to do what, when they're supposed to do it, who's supposed to transport. So that's why, you know, we have a very good working relationship with the medical director, with, you know, Dr. Reutman, you know, that leads their EMS aspect of it. So, and I know that they were meeting with the EMS division from Miami Date Fire Rescue on a monthly basis. I believe it's been, you know, shifted to a quarterly basis to ensure that the working relationships continue in a positive manner.
And out of Sunny Isles Beach and surrounding areas, let's say Aventura, North Miami Beach, maybe a little further south, Surfside, where do you see the most coordination with Hatzalah? Do you see a lot of coordination in Sunny Isles Beach, or is it in other areas?
I would have to look at the specific information because we don't track that information. It's not something that's trackable for us. I would have to have the discussion with Dr. Reutman from Hatzalah, but it would be more towards the, you know, the very affluent Jewish population. So specifically, North Miami Beach, or Aventura, or Sunny Isles Beach, I couldn't tell you. But I know that it's usually concentrated in the northeast sector of Miami Dade County.
Yeah, I'm just trying to gauge the use and, and the coordination, when those, if we could track those instances, or have some information on that. It'll be good for us.
So I would have to have the conversation with Dr. Reutman from Hatzalah because Miami Date Fire Rescue does not, you know...
Does not track it.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Stivison?
I just want to say thank you for what you do for us, for your service. And I hope that you continue doing the same thing, and I hope that I protect you guys, okay?
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have a...
Much safety.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Madam.
I think you noted there's 47 per day.
Oh, firefighters in regards to the 11 state, the 11 stations that are within the four miles, that we have 47 firefighter EMT medics that could typically respond to Sunny Isles Beach on the drop of a dime.
But the, the station that we have here in Sunny Isles, how many are...
Seven firefighters, sir. There's two units.
And just for clarification, because I know people get very nervous when they see, you know, four fire trucks show up to a building. They think that, you know, the building is, you know, going to fall down. Can you just quickly clarify why so many trucks show up to something that might be minor?
So the, every fire department across the United States is kind of guided by the National Fire Protection Agency, also known as the NFPA. So NFPA has different rulings. So NFPA 1 through, you know, 1900. And 1710, you know, requires a specific number of resources on specific types of structures. So just not to get into too much technicality, but there's three different classifications, considered low hazard, medium hazard, and high hazard. A low hazard is a typical house. A medium hazard is a typical low, couple of floor apartments, maybe a warehouse or strip mall. And a high hazard is something, just as you could hear, high hazard, a possibility of, you know, numerous fatalities. A high, a high-rise, a hospital, a nursing home. So a high hazard requires a certain number of fire trucks and a certain number of firefighters on scene within a certain amount of time. So you don't necessarily have residential homes here in Sunny Isles Beach. It's all high-rises. So by default, you're going to get, just even before the first unit arrives, if a reported structure fire or gas line or hazmat call, by default, you're going to get eight fire trucks and rescue trucks, three commanding officers, and two EMS supervisors. Because if the incident turns out to be legit, those resources need to be put in place sooner rather than later. You can't play catch-up. It's all about being proactive.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is to be a proclamation presented for Parks and Recreation Month.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Staff, thank you for having us here today. We're here for Parks and Rec Month. This, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month. Each July, we celebrate park and recreation professionals and how they improve the lives of tens of millions of people, making a lasting impact in communities across the country. Parks and recreation programs are essential to community health and well-being and help cultivate lifelong friendships, memories, and family bonds that people hold dear decades later. This year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, reminds us of the contributions of more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal volunteer workers and volunteers who maintain our country's close-to-home parks. Unfortunately, I couldn't get the whole team here today, so I have a small contingent of our team that was available while everybody else is with kids with camp or working in the parks right now. So again, I appreciate you taking the time to recognize all the work they do, dedication, professionalism, and ultimately, they're passionate about what they do, and it shows in the events that we do, our programs that we run. And it's all thanks to everything that you guys offer us to be able to see those visions through to the end.
Thank you. I, I want to give the opportunity to the Commission if they want to say a few words. Anyone? Go ahead.
Your mic.
Thank you. I would like to show my appreciation to the entire Sunny Isles Beach Recreation Force that we have, that I know you put in so much effort to make every event just a perfect event, and I just want to say thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you as well. You do a lot, I understand. The logistics can be very complex, and the hours, and dealing with residents, and keeping everybody happy. So big thank you, and a big round of applause for you.
Bless you.
Okay, so I've been a user with my family of our facility since 2007. When I moved here to Sunny Isles, my daughter Isabella, which is right there, was two years old. And since there, we've been using it. And in a personal note, I homeschool my youngest one, Musti, because he has a learning disability. He got diagnosed with a clinical anxiety and also a ADHD and potentially dyslexia. So having said all that, he's right now with you guys. He's in the camp, as of right now. And it's because he feel the love, like you say. He feels safe. It's almost emotional for me because when I leave there with you guys, I know he's going to be okay. So thank you.
Oh my God, that's, that's beautiful. Yeah, I, everything that everyone else said, I've been here for many years. I actually grew up here. I went to junior high school and high schools before we had anything, some, even sidewalks. And every year, you know, the work that you all do and everyone else that's not here in, in these parks, if it ever feels like it's not unnoticed, it is. It is very noticed. The parks are amazing, they're beautiful, all of the things that you guys put on, all of the, not just the events, just the everyday. Anytime you go into any one of our parks, it's pristine. And I don't believe there's any city that I've ever been to that looks like our city, and it's because of you guys, so thank you.
One more thing. I wanted to give you a big, huge, huge thank you for the, for the party we had about a week and a half ago. It was, it was great. A lot of smiles, a lot of happy people, good vibes. So the residents were very, very happy, and that's thanks to you.
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you. Can we take a picture, or is it too many people? Do we have a photographer? Do we have, oh, there he is, he's hiding.
He's hidden amongst our team. Call him.
Okay. All right. So we're on to discussion items. We're deferring, I believe, 3B, C, and D, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's start with 3A, please.
This is a discussion regarding remote voting by Vice Mayor Lama.
Okay, so we had briefly discussed this perhaps a, a year ago, and we're talking about if we had the ability to vote remotely. And the reason this came up is because I was sick for the previous commission meeting, and I thought I was going to be able to vote. The reason I thought I was going to be able to vote is because in the past, we've had commissioners miss the commission meetings, well, not miss, call in and be able to vote. So there, there's two things here. One, you know, we need to be consistent with our policy. I know there's a policy in place that states that we need to be present to be able to vote. We have not followed that policy correctly. And I wanted to, huh? It's part of our, it's part of our policy. I mean, I, I discussed this with, with the city attorney. So I just wanted to bring this item back up again because I think that if we are following an item, we are involved, and we happen to get sick, or there's an emergency, and we're able to call in, that we should be able to vote, okay? In the, in the past commission meeting, I, I received a phone call right before the, the meeting, and, and I was told I cannot vote. And I am aware of what the policy is. So I wanted to know if you're open to the idea of perhaps revising that policy and being able to vote. Obviously, the intention is not to abuse it, but if there's a situation where, you know, you've been involved, you are fully aware of the item, I think you should have the right to vote remotely. So I just wanted to open it up for discussion.
Before we go into discussion, I just want to make sure that we have the facts. The city attorney can just please give us a synopsis of the opinion that you wrote to us.
I'll, I'll try to be...
If possible.
I'll try to be brief and concise.
Or not.
So we, you, you don't actually have a policy. You don't have anything on the books with regards to whether by resolution, ordinance, or even informal policy. Shortly before the last meeting that you referenced, I was asked whether remote voting was permitted. So absent finding anything expressed, because your code and your charter mentions nothing of it, and frankly, there's nothing substantively in there that even suggested it was even ever really intended or considered. So the only thing we can do at that point, and at the time, is look at your charter and look at your code with regards to absences, attendance, being present. And as I explained, through the statutory construction process and analysis, you have to look at all the words, what they mean, and they have, you try to bring them into context, the, the various contexts into some sort of harmony. So you have a few sections, which I delineate in here. Obviously, your charter controls, and then your code is secondary. But the long and short of it is, is when you look at your code, and, and we'll, we'll put aside the attendance issue with regards to your charter and forfeiture by absence situation, because that, that may create a conflict, depending on which way you go.
Can you just clarify that, just for whomever is watching?
So in, in your, in your charter, you have a provision for forfeiture by absence. So you get elected, you get sworn in, and you're always a no-show, simply put. There's a process by which you could forfeit your office as a commissioner or as mayor for failure to appear. So in speaking with the city clerk, my understanding is that for purposes of tallying absences, regardless of whether they're for cause or not, for purposes of tallying absences, if you're not physically here, you're absent. So the, the problem you get into is if, and, and I'll preface it also by saying that you can allow remote voting, it's not unlawful to do so, but you would have to make some changes to your code. Because right now, if that, if you were allowed to do that, for example, you would be absent for purposes, for one purpose, but be present to vote. So you can't be both. You can't be here to vote and be absent. So we'd have to somehow reconcile those in some form, which we could do in your code. But in looking at your code and the various sections with regards to presence, and as I start off with, it's very clear that a quorum has to physically be here. That's expressly stated in there. But with regards to everything else, everything suggests, the language suggests that you be at the meeting. It even, there's a section that says that at the time of the meeting, you shall take your positions on the dais. If, if there's a conflict of interest, you're required to leave the chambers. And by leaving the chambers, you're absent for purposes of vote, for quorum, and everything else. So you put all that language together. And again, I'm not saying it necessarily says you can't, or that you can, but under that analysis, the, subjectively, in looking all of the different sections of your code and your charter, it's highly suggestive that the intent was that you physically be here in order to be able to vote. But there's no policy in place that I've been made aware of that either says you can or you can't. So you all have, will, certainly you need clarification going forward as to whether you want to proceed that way or not. And there are some things that tried to put in the memo that you should consider in doing that. So for example, if you allow remote voting, essentially, you'd have to count that as being present. So that causes issues where theoretically, not anyone would do it, but theoretically, you could be sworn in and never step foot in this building again. So those are the sort of inconsistencies we'd have to work together. Again, if you want to do remote voting, you can. Some cities choose not to, some cities do. But we would just have to reconcile some things in your code so that we're square on all levels.
Okay. And just for clarification, because Vice Mayor said that we have voted remotely. I don't, aside from COVID, I don't believe we ever voted remotely.
I don't recall, I, I remember, my memory is not great, but I remember... I don't recall, I, I remember, my memory is not great, but I remember.
Let me ask the city clerk.
So, there, there has been instances, or there have been meetings where one commissioner is absent and they have voted. I can't tell you off the top of my head how recent it was, but I do recall there being instances where.
Instances or instance?
Instances. I, I believe, I want to say that it was more than one time, but I can't tell you off the top of my head how recently.
I actually do remember a couple of years ago, maybe, one of our commissioners was not present. Actually, that commissioner never even received, it was an add-on item, which was a contract for 10 years with Newport and has to do with the restaurant. So, that commissioner never received physically even the contract, because we got it that same day, just before the meeting, and the person voted on the phone without even reading or seeing the contract, ever. So, I don't think that we need to create a policy. It seems to be clear that if you are absent, you cannot vote. So, maybe we don't really need a policy for everything. This is just like common sense, like the city attorney was explaining. If you're absent, you cannot vote. If you want to vote, you gotta be here. And if you're sick, sadly, you cannot. So, maybe you can try to defer the item or request the item to be deferred so you can have the opportunity to vote whenever you are better. But I think it's very simple, and I truly don't believe that we need a set of policy for that. I think it's clear.
To the commissioner's point, and I didn't mention this in the memo, because I didn't want to suggest one way or the other. But if you do proceed with voting remotely, there are some things you need to consider. So, the commissioner brings up a good point. If you're not here physically and someone supplements the record, whether it was a contract or with a letter or letters from residents or something, if you're someplace else and you don't have the capability of seeing that, you don't have the full record. So, you're voting on less than the full record. I would never recommend voting remotely on a quasi-judicial matter, because then you get into due process issues with the applicant for similar reasons. If you do allow remote voting, you have to have sufficient technology in place to make, and this kind of came up during COVID as well, where you have a sufficient amount of technology that, that provides full, full engagement so that it's not just over the phone where it's like, I'm sorry, what did you say? I'm not sure. I heard what, what you said. You actually see the person's face, or they're able to see at least chambers or something is presented, whether it's evidentiary or something that someone wants to look at. There's, you know, you can read articles with, you know, that someone, your constituents that come to see or speak to their elected officials should be able to see and talk to their elected officials, not talking to a phone type of thing. So, those are the type of considerations. But from a legal standpoint, certainly, to the commissioner's point, you, you don't want to risk miscommunications, because it's like, well, I thought this is what I heard, and this is why I voted, and now that I know this, I wouldn't have voted this way. Or again, if the record is supplemented, you should have full access to the record before your vote. But again, it's not illegal. It's not unlawful in Florida to do remote voting. You just, the recommendation is you have sufficient parameters in place to ensure the, the most efficient engagement with constituents, and obviously preserving the record and so on and so forth.
Commissioner Joseph, did you want to give in your two cents?
I would just like to say that I'm fine with our system the way it is, and we should try to not have an error going forward as to having any votes when someone is not present.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I can appreciate what you're saying, Vice Mayor, but I, I agree with everyone else, because it could be something even as nuanced as there might be an item that you thought you were going to vote for, and then all these people showed up, and maybe that changed your mind, or someone that was here that talked to you right before the meeting. There's just, you know, being here is important, especially, you know, we need to make the time to be here. That's what, you know, we, we agreed to, but I understand if you're sick. But I think that what Commissioner Stuvinson said is it makes sense. You can always request that an item be deferred through the, you know, the manager.
So, so, so just to, you know, backtrack a little bit, the intent is not to be absent. I, I understand that. I think we all understand that we need to be present physically. This is in case of illness or of an emergency. And, you know, with technology being in place, I think that, you know, anybody that's absent, that's been following an item and is well-versed on that item. And if there is some documentation that is, you know, handed to us a couple hours before, that could easily be sent to someone that is, is about to vote remotely. So, it'll be interesting to see what other cities have done, other cities that do allow remote voting, because some of your concerns, I think that with technology can be solved easily. It's not something to be abused. I just feel that, you know, when somebody, let's say on a Monday, I, I come to Tuesday Agenda Review, and Thursday, I'm sick. I'm super sick. I'm fully aware of what's going on. If there's additional documentation or emails or letters from the residents, Mauricio can send those to us. The city clerks can send those to us. As far as be, having residents show up, you, you could see that through YouTube. You could see that through our website. You, you could be, you know, fully aware. Obviously, it's not the same as being present, but I think that there's ways to circumvent some of those challenges. So, that, I just wanted to put that out there, because we haven't been consistent. And I think that, you know, now that a few of us got sick, I just wanted to bring it up. And, you know, it, it's fine, but let's be consistent. I just don't want to get a call 30 minutes before stating that I cannot vote when I know I myself, I think I have voted over the phone, and other commissioners have voted over the phone as well. So, we either go left or we go right. So, we need to be clear on that. But again, my position is that we should have some exceptions built into our charter or a policy, et cetera, just like our charter, I think, allows us to miss three commission meetings, I believe, or maybe four. Six? That many? Oh, my God, that's crazy. Yeah, no, is it, are you sure?
Yeah, I think it's, it's four in a row.
It's six, six excused, four if you're a commissioner, and three if you're a mayor.
Right.
In the calendar year.
In the calendar year. So, yeah, it's substantial. Look, I can appreciate what you're saying, and I, I'm sure you were really frustrated, but to your point about being fully versed and engaged, I hope that we all are in every single item. So, you know, that's the assumption. You know, just don't get sick, Alex.
I could have easily not have been here.
Okay. Commissioner Viscara wanted to say something? Go ahead, Commissioner Viscara.
Speaking of remote participation, here I am. Okay, so I think that Alan makes a good case for our needs to revamp our code and our charter. I was not aware that we have a policy in place, but I, Alan, if I heard you correctly, you said that we don't, right? Is that right?
Correct. I'm not aware of any official policy or written policy.
Right, neither am I, neither am I. But, but clearly, there's, there's a, there's a way that we've been interpreting things, and there's a way that we've been doing things. So, to me, there's a couple of things that are very clear. Number one, that you do need the physical presence to have a quorum. What that means is, your worst-case scenario is going to be three people present and two people on the phone. But you're obviously going to have the majority of people present. It makes sense to me that the presiding person should be there in person. So, if the mayor is not there, let's say she's on the phone, but she's not there physically, then the vice mayor would be the presiding officer. That's not clear. I think it's logical, but it's not clear. I think that could be clarified. The, the need for a physical place, again, it's not, I don't think it's explicit. But obviously, if you require a quorum, a physical quorum, you require a physi, a physical place for them to be at, right? So, if you want to clarify that, that's fine, you know, but I think it's, it's very logical. And then, I'm just going through your memo, Alan, okay? So, when it comes to the conflict of interest piece, there's the part about, you, you know, you, you can't, what is it? Something about where you underline counting the vote. Well, you can't be, if you're making yourself absent for the purpose of a, of a conflict of interest, that after the meeting has started, and the quorum to start the meeting at least is no longer there. So, I feel that this only applies when in total you have three people present, right? Because we've always counted physical and telephonic as being present. And I, I don't take issue with the fact that we need to clarify the language. But I, and maybe we can clarify even the, the number of times that we can appear telephonically, because I agree with you that since it's silent, it could very well be that somebody just shows up for all 12, 11, right, for all 11 meetings of the year by phone, and there's nothing to prevent that. I don't think that's appropriate. But I also don't think that it should just be a complete ban, because life happens, and you can still be prepared. I understand, by the way, not with a quasi-judicial. As for the comment that Stuyvesant did about the, the commissioner on the phone, that was me, and I remember that I had COVID, that I had prepared. And the thing about that leaf, it was an add-on. I think we, I, I don't like add-ons for that reason. If I had been present, I wouldn't have been able to properly prepare for that, because it was handed to us kind of late in the game. So, but I remember it was an urgent matter. I knew there was a lot of work that went into it, and in the end, it played out fine. So, if you trust the work of your staff, and they're bringing something to you in an urgent way, it played out beautifully. But I didn't like it. I didn't like the process. I don't like being handed things virtually or physically, anything last minute, because I do like to be able to prepare. Let's see, what else? The forfeiture piece, I think that that's what we've been using to, to measure our absences and what we're allowed to do, but we always interpreted it as absence means you're not there by phone and you're not there in person. So, none of those. And I, I think it's been working, but I understand not leaving that window open for somebody to just like not show up at all and like be there on the phone and, and because then it's like you're not taking the job seriously, right? So, and I, and I understand putting some clarity around that, but life happens. You know, I'm, I'm in Ohio today, because I planned on, on being present, and I thought it would be okay. I'm, I'm very prepared. I'm able to have the conversation. I'm able to contribute. So, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But I do think that we need to, you know, put, what do you call those? Guardrails for abuse. It hasn't been a problem. We don't have a history of that. Our submission shows up. So, I, I do think that we should be able to, to vote telephonically, but perhaps put some, some parameters around it. Life happens, guys. Kids get sick. We get sick. Accidents happen. But we're still able to do the job. And like the vice mayor said, now with, with like technology coming forward, and we, maybe we can make it so that it's, you know, Zoom and like, like in court, right? In court, we have all in Zoom. I'm in my office. My client is in their home. The judge is in their chambers. The opposing counsel is in their office. Their client is in their home. Nobody is physically in, in, in the same room, and the cases are moving forward this way. So, it's very possible our judicial system can function this way. We can certainly function this way, especially if it's on a, on a exception basis. This is not going to be the norm. It's, it's super possible. I think we need to get with the times, but I do think we need to put in some guardrails. And I think that until we do, we should be able to continue voting telephonically, because it is fuzzy. And so, because it's fuzzy, we, we can interpret it to allow for the, the proper participation of, of the people who, who are present, even though not physically present. So, those would be my thoughts. I, I think that, you know, our code and our charter needs to be aligned, but that we should be able to continue to appear telephonically on an exception basis. And those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, respectfully, I disagree. I think that our, the, those that, that wrote the charter never assumed that anybody would even consider voting remotely. And I think that our charter does address, you know, life happening and getting sick. We have a very generous policy of, of absences, and if you start adding exceptions, then where do you stop? So, I think unless anyone else here disagrees, we keep it as is. Well, if you, yes, thank you, but.
Yeah, I have another comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. The thing with government is that apparently, we have a unique ability to complicate things. I see a very simple, you're absent, you can vote, no more than that. And I understand life happens. Believe me, I do. I have children as well. So, and so, about that specific contract that I was talking, it was a contract for 10 years that we received in the moment that we were sitting down in here. I trust our staff. I trust the work of the city attorney and everybody else, but it happened to me that I like to read, and I take my job very serious. So, I need to verify, because we are humans, and we make mistakes, and we've seen it in the past. So, I don't see the need to add exceptions, like we said before, because what happened if we are in border, border, and then I can say that, oh, I have a cold and it's sneezing, but it happened to me that I'm not here because I'm in border, border now because of the sneezing. So, what is going to be, what kind of sickness are we allowed to have to vote on the phone or not? So, if we can fussy and very, very, very complicated of a thing that is very simple, you can hear, you can be part of the discussion, like, like the vice mayor was, was the last month, but sadly, if you are not present, then you cannot vote.
Yeah, okay.
And also, I just like, we're deciding for future commissions, future mayors, and I think we have to consider that as well.
Yeah.
I mean, you solve that easily. You, you're allowed two remote votes per, per.
Yeah, I, no, I don't, you don't, you don't have the support, Alex.
That's it. No, I'm just stating out there. I'm sure it's going to come up in the future.
No, it could come up in the future, but I agree. I think we're over-complicating. I think Commissioner Stuvinson is right. I think that it was, it's actually very clear, so. But it's a good conversation to have, so let's.
We have in this conversation.
Well, it's clear to three of us. So, all right, item 3E.
3E is a discussion regarding the feasibility of a Winterland Village attraction by Commissioner Stuyvesant.
So, back in 2021, I remember that you guys had a, probably potential vendor who made a presentation about Winterland, Winter Village, et cetera. It was very beautiful, fantastic. I just res, resaw the, the presentation. I was not part of the commission back then. And between the reasons why apparently it was in pursuit is because it was the construction and another construction, but the renovation of the bridge in 163. So, given that, I received a lot of feedback about last year's Winter Festival, and knowing now that we spent on that evening $90,000, and the there were like mixed emotions about it, I would like to consider to have in conversations with that specific vendor or whoever, who could bring something like a Winter Village, a Winter Market that we can have for a longer period of time, et cetera, like that is happening in other cities here in America, and usually almost all over Europe. And that will be a service that we can give to our people. And again, I like what they presented back then, so I would like to see if that is feasible for the winter. Thank you.
Can you go into more detail? I didn't really understand.
You need to see the presentation.
It was, it was, it was amazing. It was amazing. It was a ice skating rink that was a real ice skating rink.
That was the one that we had the problem with the electricity, that we were having a bad deal.
It was a number of things, but it was for two months, I believe, that you can use.
Three months, I believe.
Three months. It was really very cool. It was amazing, but.
Yeah, I think some of the concern was also there was going to be people coming from the outside, obviously, because they're going to market that to South Florida, and it was not going to be just for us. So they basically, they will take over the park, okay? And it was cool. It was awesome. So there was a few concerns. One, the bridge being refurbished, the bridge on 163rd, and then also the influx of people coming into the city and perhaps that causing some, you know, some frustration, traffic, et cetera. I don't know, that's what I recall.
Well, I'm very supportive of revisiting this and considering it with obviously all the things that we had an issue with or this commission had an issue with back then.
Yeah, I'm in support of it too, but I'm just going back in history.
Because if we were able to limit or have tickets for, you know, because at Heritage, we can't limit it to residents only, correct?
It wasn't about, no. So that vendor agreed that there would be discounted tickets for our residents. However, their business model relied heavily on it being a regional attraction, meaning that it's bringing in, you know, like a thousand people from outside of the city on a daily basis to make it worth their while.
All right. Well, I would support us talking to other cities that are doing something similar. Commissioner Joseph, did you want to add?
Yeah, if there's something feasible and we have some type of template that we could possibly follow, then I'm open to it.
Maybe can you guys share with us the presentation so they know what we're talking about?
Yes.
Whoever, like Jerry wasn't there, maybe, so, yeah.
Yes, we can share the presentation. And then we would like some better direction from you as far as, you know, what that vision is, because that particular presentation, it was beautiful, and it was a tremendous endeavor, but it would tie up the park for three months. They didn't want to go less than that for their investment. And that brought forward some other issues that we have with Miami-Dade County and a referendum being required to use a park for that purpose for that extended period of time. So I don't know if Alan can elaborate on that.
Yeah, so back when this was presented, there's a, in the county's charter, there's a provision, Article 7, dealing with parks and, which was enacted before the city was even incorporated, where the commercial use of a park or a predominant part of the park for an extended amount of time is not permitted, and it is only permitted if you take it to the voters. And we had, my predecessor had contacted the county attorney's office at the time, and they said three months was pushing it for the amount of time where you're actually taking over a park. The county wouldn't necessarily step in and go crazy about it, but unfortunately, there's a provision where your residents can object and challenge it if it's not taken to the voters. So I'm not saying it's impossible, but we'd have to be careful to get the county on board, and that still wouldn't foreclose necessarily one of your residents that's impacted in any of the surrounding area of the park from challenging it.
Of all parks, I think that one is the most underutilized, and this would be.
If I may, also, the presentation was, like you said, beautiful, and maybe it was a little bit too ambitious for us. So maybe they can, because it has even a snow tubing, snow tubing, et cetera. So it was really cool. I believe we had grown to the point that where we need something like that. It doesn't have to be the same scope. It can be turned it down, and also probably not three months, but two months or whatever, you know? And maybe it's not the only vendor. Probably there is other people interested all over America. So that's why the direction that I would like, if possible, to give to the staff is to consider this as a possibility and look for it, whatever it is, probably starting with that particular vendor, but whoever else can be, provide something. And again, it's a negotiation, so not three months, two months, not so aggressive and so ambitious, even though that was great, maybe a little bit turn it down for the first time. And to the point about traffic, I do not believe our traffic is going to get less at all. Look what's happening with Aventura Mall, which is an amazing mall, like the best mall in America or whatever, and continues growing, more restaurants and more of everything. And a lot of people that is going to Aventura come through Sunny Isles. So regardless, we have exposure and people is going to continue going through our city. And we are lucky that Gateway have plenty of parking spaces, and to the mayor's point, is very underused, that such a big property. So if we can bring something to our city and to our residents and to South Florida, why not?
Are you suggesting it for this year?
I'm sorry? Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, well, the presentation that they did, the presentation when they asked for you guys, because you guys were here back then, was actually July 2021. So, and then you guys are going to have the opportunity to continue, like, getting all the tweaks to make it happen. So I do believe we can make it happen for this winter.
The biggest bang for our buck, so.
So what?
We're always looking to get the biggest bang for our buck. So let's go for it.
Does Commissioner Viscara have anything to add? Commissioner Viscara?
Sorry, I'm muted. Say that again?
Did you, did you want to add anything? Are you in support of?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right. So I think you have the direction, Mr. City Manager. Okay, wonderful. I don't think we have any other items?
No, ma'am.
All right, meeting adjourned. See everyone at 6:30.
6:15.
6:15. Thank you. Thank you.